I'm here. All right, just so everybody knows it's on right now, we are recording this since we don't have the recorder we normally have in the office. And it is also being livestreamed so people could watch on the YouTube channel. And so we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals to order at 7:02 before I have Terry do roll call because she's on the phone. We're all used to it at this point. If you got background noise, just hit mute. And then we'll unmute. We get a chance for everybody to speak so that we don't talk over everybody. So Terry appears to be on the phone. Hopefully she's trying to connect somebody. So I will do. Roger, I can't hear you. All right, Roger's audio is reconnecting. I wonder if that's who. All right, Roger. Now you just have to unmute.
Okay.
There we are.
There you go, Roger.
Thanks. All right. All right, Terry, we're ready for roll call.
Hey. Kay? Here. Uh, Ken?
I'm here.
I'm Mr. Hookrattle.
He's here.
Okay, Doug?
Doug, you still on? There you are.
And then, of course, Roger is on, but Roger won't be able to vote tonight.
Correct, because he is the applicant. All right. So our agenda tonight is the variance that we submitted. We will follow this a similar order to how we do it in person. I'll just try to stick to that order a little more. We'll have Terry give us an update on what it, what the variance is. And from the village perspective, Roger will then have a chance to talk and explain what he's going to do. Then we will have a chance for BZA members to ask Roger questions. We'll take comments as well from public. Since we're recording and we don't have regular meeting minutes, I'll just ask everybody to give your name and address, though I think I recognize just about everybody that's on here. So and listen to comments either in favor of or against this variance. And then we'll, of course, deliberate on it. So with that, I will ask Terry to go ahead and give us a staff summary, village perspective of this variance request. And you're muted. So there you go.
There you go. Thanks, Mayor. The purpose of tonight's meeting is that this is a public hearing for the Mr. and Mrs. Woods' variance on their property. Their property is located at Zero Holder Road. The parcel number is 0240255200. It's a parcel that right now is about 11, give or take acres. They are asking for a zoning variance on this property due to the fact that in an R2 residential district, the entrance to a parcel must be off an improved paved road and must be at least 100 feet wide. While this property is off of an improved paved road being Holder Road, the width of the parcel is only around 68 feet, making about 32 feet shorter than the 100-foot requirements. So again, the purpose of this meeting tonight is just to hear the hearing on the entrance to the property.
All right. Roger, do you want to add anything? Roger, you still there? You're muted. Give him a second. Here he comes. There you are.
There I am. Okay. What we intended to do at one time is run a street back and have several lots. Well, we've changed our mind. What I did is I gave a lot of land on both sides of this entrance to the neighbors. I just gave it to them because I thought all I needed was 68 feet to run a street back. Well, I've changed my mind. I don't really want to develop into several lots. I just want to have an entrance back with eventually maybe one, two, or three lots back there.
So originally, I, originally, when you parsed this out, the idea was to put a road there and it was only 68, and that's why you kept it at 68? Yes. Okay. All right. Hang tight. What I'll do is there's a couple of people on the meeting. I'll ask first for anybody who wants to speak. Go ahead and give me some sort of reaction or unmute yourself and say I do, and I'll be able to tell who you are and ask you to identify. Since this is a hearing, I'll just ask you to take a quick affirmation that anything you say is going to be true. Is there anybody from the public that is on this meeting that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, I see. Okay, look. Steve, I believe your audio is not working, and I've got one from Ms. Hiles as well. So Steve Kenny, I can't, can't hear you. I see you guys talking. So I'm going to go ahead and we'll go to Ms. Hiles first while you guys work out your audio. Ms. Hiles, you can unmute yourself and just give us your name and address real quick.
Hello?
Yes, you're there.
Um, everything that I'm hearing is quite garbled, and I'm not able to understand anybody. So it's really broken up to me, and I don't know if it's something I was doing wrong, but I only heard half of what Roger was saying. I do know what it is. He doesn't need to repeat. And is everybody hearing me clear? Is it just my system?
Yep, I've got you clear. And I'm seeing other heads nod that yes, they have you as well. So why don't you first, so Dietra Hiles, and what's your address?
Um, the only thing I can, the only thing I can say right now is I will try to listen to everything said and if I could not hear it clearly. Will that be all right?
Yeah, if you want to try to reconnect, you could try that as well because you were kind of garbled there.
Okay, I'll be reconnecting. Thank you.
All right. Steve, I see your mouth moving, but I don't hear any words yet. You're going to call in? Okay, they're going to call in. There's a couple other people on here as well. Do either of you have anything to add at this time? Both of you are currently showing muted, so make sure to unmute yourself.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. And there's a Mr. Newton on as well. I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance. Do you have anything at this time? All right, not hearing anything. We know Steve's going to connect in. While that's working on, let's go ahead and give committee members an opportunity to ask questions about the variance to Terry from the staff perspective or Roger about, about the variance request. So you guys just start firing away and.
Okay, I have a concern, and I shared with Terry the infrared maps. You know me, I'm always the one asking questions about water. And I know that Roger's property is a major location for what is known as the Acres Ditch. And the area that he is wanting to develop is where a major juncture in that drainage system lies. And I think before any development is made in this area, we need to have Roger be responsible for seeing that that drainage system is adequately repaired to the approval of our county engineer before we can discuss any development.
I think we need to, to be careful where we're at. I mean, we've talked about Acres Ditch since 2016 and had numerous meetings on it. But this isn't, this isn't a development meeting. We can consider some of the future uses, but it's not a, a development. It's, it's, do we, do we grant a driveway to a parcel of land, whether it's right now one, one big parcel or three or 10 parcels in the future? Do we, one of the things we have to consider from our code is, do we unnecessarily restrict the use of that land by not granting a variance? Said another way, you know, is, does the land have beneficial use without granting a variance? Can you build on it essentially? And that driveway issue versus a development issue where I think we would look at a planned urban development, depending on the number of homes or, or building, with site plans are different, different meetings, different purviews. That's a planning and zoning type question, I think.
I guess my concern is if we grant the variance, will Roger go ahead and build on it and then we not have an opportunity to address an issue that involves a lot of people? That's my concern.
Okay. Under our code, it says. Roger, what's your timeline?
Unlimited.
What's that?
Unlimited.
Right now, he's growing soybeans on the land.
Yes.
So, okay.
There's, there's elevations to where you know, the ditch, I understand Ms. Williamson's question. The ditch on my property has been totally repaired with no issues. Where the problem is, is downstream from me. So my property is good. I repaired a good bit of it. I put a manhole in out there with, with steps. You know, I've done a lot of work through the years. Now I plan to do more work to make sure when the water comes onto my property that it goes off my property without, without too much of a problem. So, but with 11 acres, there's still plenty of places to construct a home.
And Terry? Um, Terry, I don't know if you remember off the top of your head. I vaguely remember some of it. When we talked, when we had meetings with everyone about that Acres Ditch and where the problem was, I, I remember there was the backup on Roger and it backs up to Steve Kenny's pond that it creates and but weren't we looking at the property in Walnut Township is where the pipe destruction is at?
That would be where it would exit, and he wasn't willing to work with the village.
Again, I think the expert that we need to have give us a review and tell us where our problem issues are. I'm not discrediting your knowledge, Roger, but the county engineer is the expert who would be able to tell us where the problems lie and what needs to be done to repair them.
The, the problem with that, Kay, is when we looked at this in 2016, 2017, when we had the chance at a $300,000 grant, is the county engineer said they're not going to do anything with it. They're not going to touch it.
Okay, maybe they're not going to do anything, but the county engineer at this time would be able to come in and evaluate the situation and tell us what, okay. This also affects Rick Foreman's property. Okay, as well as Steve Kenny's, as well as Mr. Raver, Mr. Spencer, Stolzes, and Hannah's. All those people along Holder Road are right in the midst of this ditch. Okay? And it's not just Steve Kenny's who's having problems. A part of it is a problem within the village. Not all of it is. But this parcel, if we allow him to build upon it on the ditch, then we've, we've allowed a problem to persist.
Again, the variance, though, isn't, this isn't about building. This is about whether there's a variance to be able to put a driveway there. I see Steve's connected again. I don't know if he has audio, but I did get a chat, and I want to make sure we read this into the, the record for it. We're echoing. So one of your devices needs to go on mute. For summary. But we got you. But I'll read it right here, and then we'll have Steve turn his microphone back on. It says, "We've also repaired our drainage ditch. When we purchased this property, our land was farmable. It wasn't until early 2000 that the flooding started. That was after all the buildings started on Holder Road." So that, that was the chat. So Steve, can you?
Can you hear me?
Have, um, if you could run into the other room or turn the speakers down on the other device.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now I can't hear you. Let me try something else here. I'll turn my speaker on because I had it on. Now can you hear me?
I've got you.
Okay. My speaker's off right now, so my computer speaker I can't hear.
Okay.
All right. So.
So, hold on, Steve. Since you're going to give us something, just give us for the recording, your address.
145 Baltimore Somerset Road, Northeast Baltimore Hut.
All right. And I got to ask you because it's a public hearing. You swear or affirm everything you're going to say is truthful?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. What do you have to say for?
Well, a couple things. I, from what you said when we were trying to repair, this is just a variance allowing a driveway. If, if the very, I don't, I don't understand if it's just a variance, why I would, why I got a letter about this because if it's just allowing a driveway, that's one thing. I'm against any house building right now because of the water problem that affects people east of me and five properties west of me. And I've had eight acres or more underwater. Last year, I couldn't even go out in it. And about two months ago, I finally was able to go out in it. We replaced 300-plus feet of pipe, 12-inch pipe, in my back property and got through the fence row into Rogers', and we all worked together. I mean, I mean, he was, he allowed me to do that. In my water supposedly from the maps that I have go into Acres Ditch. That I don't know if the ditch, I have no idea what's happened. But I'm not draining, or I am draining, and it's very, very slow. I don't know what's going on. I, when I bought this property, maybe in 97, we had a guy sew it for hay. We were going to farm it, you know, grow hay, bale hay. And you know, the, the first, everything was fine. Then all of a sudden, it started going. But it, like, like we talked before, when I bought it in 97 or 98, it was farmed up to then. It, there was no problem. And all of a sudden, it just started getting worse and worse. And it's no lie about eight acres. Brian Roach behind me, he's got the same issue, and I wouldn't doubt he's lost, I have no idea, three, four acres? Now we're taxed at a higher rate because I can't farm it. I don't want any property until this drainage is fixed. It's got to be fixed. And I happen to be at the low end of it, but like I say, there's the, all the houses east of me. There'd be five. They're coming right into that. You know, when we replaced the tile, we tied everybody back in, which was Butch Frederick's house at the time. He, he didn't have a tie in there, but everything goes that way. And that's the issue. The drainage needs to be fixed before we do any more and make it even worse. That's, that's what I got a problem with. I have no problem with anybody that, it's, you know, any person or anything like that, but it's, it's bad. I can't even put, I never even put the downspouts on my barn that I got back there because I've just let me go on the ground because why, there's no, I can't take it to drain.
Our garden is even underwater.
And then I went back and everything is bush hogged back there. In the past month and a half, we finally were able to go through there. And when I go back to the property line, the south, on the south field boarding, Brian Roach, I can see the water line on the trees. That is, it's probably two feet or more. It's, it's bad. And that, it's just terrible. You can't tell water right now when the grass is growing, but anybody going by, they call it Lake Kenny. And kind of just had to laugh at it. But that's basically my thing. I, I, I need to get this, this drainage in, and I've got the drainage maps, the Acres Ditch. I've got stuff from the county soil and water. Bob Jackson's original. I got two original things from Bob Jackson. One of them, the map is, the paper's probably 32 by 36 that shows all the properties, the Acres Ditch. I have no idea what's wrong. The county won't do anything. But we replaced our pipe, and I'm going over into Rogers', and I don't know where, you know, where the problem is from there. I have talked to the township at one time, soil and water a few times, as well as Roger. I was just down there again two months ago before this ever happened, trying to figure out what can we do, you know? And then west of me, Mulcahy's and the field that Foreman owns, Hayes, I mean, that goes, and the bowling alley, all comes into there, too.
Let me ask Steve. Steve, if you remember, do you remember, were you in those meetings when we outlined Acres Ditch and, and different things? Because I think Rick talked about sinkholes forming and stuff like that?
I, I'm having a hard time here. Now I can try my speaker again. See if it doesn't echo. Well, at least I can turn it on until I talk.
All right. Were you in some of the, those meetings we had where we outlined Acres Ditch and some of the problems? And, and traced them down?
Don't think he can hear you.
Okay. Were you in some of those meetings about Acres Ditch where we traced the problems from your property and Rogers? And Rick was in one of them where he talked about a sinkhole forming. I can't remember if that was discussed at a meeting you were at, or if it was just discussed at a service meeting. And I don't remember everything, and was hoping maybe you were there and had, could remember off the top of your head. No? Oh, we can't hear you.
I travel out of, I travel out of. Why is it doing it now?
Yep, all right. Um, let me ask this to you, Steve and Kay and Roger. With these water issues as they exist, is it even feasible to build a home in that area?
I don't feel that it's feasible to build a home over top of this drainage system that has not been resolved yet. And I, I talked to Mike Raver, and he has water issues that have not been resolved. And now I've not talked to his neighbor, his three neighbors to the east, but the ditch runs. When all those homes were, now I go back, I've lived in this community for 60 years. Okay? And my parents' farm is on the Canars Ditch. Okay, they were responsible for seeing that the tile carried the water from under the railroad across their property and then under the road. And Mr. Sackus then took on that responsibility to take it from there. Okay? So each person that the ditch crosses their property has to uphold the integrity of the drainage system in order for this to work. And when the houses were built along Holder Road, Roger, I think you're involved in this, those interfered. And my father, who's 93, attests, can attest to the fact that the property that Mr. Kenny is talking about has been tillable land until the houses were built on Holder Road. And he's the one that reminded me about the ditch before our meeting. And that before we did anything more, we needed to address the issue and see where the problems were before we built on top of the problem.
I, I guess my, my follow-up to that, then. Steve's done a lot of work to work on the drainage for him. Roger's talked about some of the stuff he's done to work on the drainage for it as well. But if they've both maintained their drainage and it's further south and outside of Roger's property, are we, are we punishing him for something out of his control if this variance is not granted?
Okay, Roger said that it's been taken care of. I'm sorry, but I would prefer the expertise of the county engineer to document that what Mr. Kenny has done has been adequate, what Mr. Woods has done has been adequate, and there won't be any additional problems there when we build a house on it before I'm going to take their word. Okay?
That's fair enough, and, and we can try, but we tried to get the engineers out here before on that, and they flat refused.
I would be happy to use, I talked to, Art Gray is a water engineer who's testified and participated in a number of situations like this. And he said the best way to handle it is, he recommended that I check with Mr. Up, the county engineer, to have the verification before we move forward. He said Mr. Up is very cooperative. He's a graduate of Liberty Union, so he has come from our community. I would think that he would be willing to invest some time in letting us know what it is that truly needs to be done. Everybody's willing to say, "I did my part, but things are not right." And until we find out.
And, and keep in mind, again.
I know what the variance is.
Yeah.
But if Roger, he can put a road in, he's going to build a house there.
And, and so, you know, it's, it's a variance, and we're starting to talk about development issues. But one of the things BZA can do is grant a variance with special conditions, such as get an engineer's okay, that your water drainage is good. So, so that is always an option. It's not a, it's, on a variance, it's not a yes or no binary choice. There is that middle ground.
I discussed that with Terry, what our options are. We can say I discussed that with Terry, what our options are. We can say yes, we can say no, we can say yes with conditions. I understand that. So if we say yes with conditions, then Roger cannot do anything until those conditions are met. Am I correct?
Depending on how you guys word those conditions, yeah. You know, you, you could, you could word them in such a way that that would be accurate.
Okay. I'd like to know what Mr. Mauger and Mr. Hookrattle have to say. I know they're very thought-worthy about our issues.
Can y'all hear me yet?
I can hear Steve.
You can hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Steve.
All right. Here's, when I went down to Soil and Water, maybe in May, I don't know. Here's the, can you see the card? Uh, maybe?
Yeah, right there. Nikki Drake.
Yes. She was, uh, an assistant to a boyer back, gosh, I don't know, time flies. It could have been ten years ago when we were trying to fix the problem. Um, with them, from when I talked to her, was trying to find out with, with the landowners, which I haven't talked to Roger since then. I haven't talked to Mr. Roach since then because the drainage all goes south. But I'd have to find out from them. On the other side of the road, previously Jeff Seager, uh, owns property where the, where it goes through. And one of the meetings, I spoke to y'all about the, the pipe going underneath the road. I did hear where, um, Ken Boucher went out there and tried to do some repairs, and Terry did ask me, she goes, did that solve my problem, or did it get better? And I, I, basically, I think I told her no. Hadn't gotten better. They thought they solved the problem, and I appreciate it. But, uh, anyway, with Nikki, there was a couple things. If we could go into the pipe, they'll GPS it. So we can go into like, our pipe is supposed to go into Ackers Drainage. We, they can GPS it. They can run a camera. She said six hundred feet. I don't think you'd ever go, go that far down there because I looked at that with, uh, New River Electric, who's an AEP contractor. They have a five-hundred-foot router, but they said, if you go into something that big, it'll try to go up and down, and you'll never, you may get three hundred feet. But if we have cooperation that way, of course, we have hoes that I can get, you know, to dig. And we can, if we dig in the pipe, and we find another place to enter, to try to find it. And that is a free service of the county Soil and Water Council, because that's been set up. But however this all goes now, it's just like, we need, oh my gosh, uh, we need, uh, I, I, I need drainage, and, and more houses is gonna be detrimental. And that's all I can, you know, go ahead, Jim.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
Thoughts, questions? Kay wanted to hear from you and, and Jim, so I see you're unmuted, so I'll go to you.
Well, uh, I personally don't know that much about the water situation. I wasn't involved in the discussions a, as far as the Ackers Ditch goes. I believe I came on the board after that. Um, I, I know Lake Kenny, as it's called out there, has been an ongoing problem for years and years, and has seemed to have gotten worse. I don't know where the problem is. I don't know how much of it has to do with, with this variance right now. Um, quite honestly, my, my largest concern, as far as the variance goes, was um, the width of, of the frontage, which was seventy-some feet. Uh, i- if we're talking about, um, more than one parcel back there, they were cutting that, those, those parcels of frontage down to maybe twenty or thirty feet. If they share a driveway, I'm concerned about upkeep of, of that. And now we're down to twenty, twenty-five foot frontage. Uh, but again, I don't know that much about the water situation, so I can't really chime in too much on that.
Okay. I guess, when I, when I saw it, my, Roger, if you're unmuted, pipe in, I imagined it would be a single shared driveway like the homes there on Holder Road towards the, towards the village line. Um, Roger, do you have any? Was, was it gonna be one driveway or multiple?
Well, right now, it would be one driveway. That's what I've got in mind. But eleven acres is a lot of land for one house. I guess my question is, since my system has been repaired over the years and is in excellent condition with manholes, with drainage, then I guess one house versus one field. What does one house add to the burden of the pipe more than a field? The drainage coming off the house is the same as drainage coming off of the field. So I can't see that there's a drainage issue other than the fact the drainage issue is in somebody else's property that hasn't maintained it like I. I've maintained my system on a regular basis. I've ran cameras down it. I've repaired it, and it works just fine. So why am I penalized for something where other people might not maintain their system as well as I do? Uh, right now, my intentions are, one, have and I guess the question is, again, what, how house burdened the system any more than a, than a soybean field?
Roger, my concern is not what your house or houses are going to add to the system. I'm concerned that if they, we find that there are issues in your system, and the house is built on top of it, then that property owner's gonna be very upset that I allowed that to happen as a planning and zoning committee member.
Uh, Kay, that field is a thousand and some feet wide. Why would I build a house on top of a drainage system? That is really...
Then why did you sell lots on top of the drainage system on Holder Road?
I didn't.
Yes, Raver and Spencer and Schultz's and Hannah's are, those properties are right on the stitch. And that's, I have a concern.
That drainage system goes through their yard so that they can tap into it with their, with their, uh, water. It, it, they're not built on top of the pipe. The pipe is behind their house.
Then why are they having water issues?
Downstream is the problem, Kay.
Well, then I need a city, or the county engineer to attest to that for me before I want any more construction to happen in that area. I feel that...
I guess the, it is, the variance here tonight is a variance on seven feet versus a hundred feet. Okay, is the variance conditioned on an inspection of the system? What, what is it?
I haven't agreed to a variance yet.
Okay, now, I gave away several feet on each side of that driveway because I didn't think I needed it. Now, if I purchase that back, or if that property owner gives it back to me, do I need a variance anymore?
No, if you had a hundred feet, you wouldn't need a variance.
Okay, would I be able to build back there if I bought back thirty feet?
Yes.
Would that be a planned urban development, a PUD?
I don't know. Hold on, I don't know who's speaking. I haven't got to yet, so we'll... Thank you.
So the question is, if I purchased thirty feet, then I have the right to build back there, right?
Within the existing code, correct.
Okay. I, I guess, since I've been so adamant on my drainage, and I've repaired it on a regular basis, and the fact that a house does not develop any more water than a field, I guess that's my question.
It does. You, you think about it, depends on the house. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. When you put a house in, you put a basement in, you're going down eight to ten foot below, where's the water table? You start running salt pumps. I've been around people in different areas where their pumps run continuously.
Well, that's a...
It's only an inch and a half line, but it's, it's an issue with water. So we would, because it's not on the surface, but now we start getting groundwater, we'll bring it up into the pumps. So I mean, you can, there is a difference between a house and a field. And, and that's groundwater. And I've, I've seen it here when I, out at Walters, you know, your, your friend Walters, when I was trying to tie in the pipe, I dug it. I was trying to find some of this tile that was coming into it to make sure it was good, and I dug down eight to ten feet, and it filled up with water. What's, and you're downhill a little bit. What's it gonna do there? And then it starts pumping through salt pumps, so I can't say, I don't know where my tile, my tile was supposed to go into that. It's supposed to go into that Ackers Ditch. We got all the paperwork for it. Why is it not draining? If you're draining, I'm not draining. Why? I don't know. And it's not, I'm not saying you did anything, Roger. I just know this all came about, and it just, from the early or late ninety-nines or nineties and on, so there's, there's something, but anyway.
And that all corresponds with the building that went on back on Holder Road. It was all in the late nineties, early two thousands, and every house that's gone up, the water drainage has gotten worse. So maybe you have maintained your personal property, but I don't know how it's not going any further. I don't know how you're draining your personal property because your property should be going into the Ackers Ditch also. And if yours is flowing fine, then why isn't ours? And I think it comes back to these houses on Holder Road.
But that gets back to the bigger question, though, of...
Roger solved his problem. He can go buy his thirty feet.
Well, there, there's that. Um, but the, the, gets back to the question of if, if it is, and, and this goes kinda, Kay, to your point about, you know, wanting, wanting an engineer to say it is, if Roger's draining his property, and that's not the issue, it's someone else's property, a, a denial of a variance for a driveway size, uh, it is, you know, probably inappropriate because it's punishing someone for something they can't control.
Hand raised.
Until a county engineer verifies that Roger's done everything, and I appreciate his expertise, but excuse me if I refer to a trained professional who could evaluate the situation and assure us that we're not going to experience any issues that will need to be dealt with there on that property, I'm opposed to any additional development. And the only avenue that I have, Roger, is to deny the variance. You can go buy the land, and I don't have any say. I guess I'm just wanting to be a good steward to my neighbors. And I don't even live in the community. But as a farmer's daughter, you take care of the water.
Jim, are you still...
Let me, yeah, let me give you a little history.
Hear me?
Raver's house was built, and Jim Reed's house was built. Everything was fine. I had that engineered through Lockwood Engineering. He engineered the system to where it would drain. The problem is beyond my control. It's downstream. And I think most of the problem is on the Hannah property, the old, uh, it's Rick's old property, but Hannah bought it. I think that that's where the problem is. That's out of my control. You know, I have, I have no control beyond my property. So at one time, Raver and Jim Reed's property drained fine. Okay, now, I'm asking for a variance. So what, what does the two have to do with each other? The fact that there's four feet of elevation in that field that if I build a house, it's gonna drain just fine.
Right onto my property.
Well, Roger, I guess you found that you can solve the problem. You don't have to please Kay. You can just go buy the rest of your frontage, and then we don't have an issue. I don't have any say in it. But like I said, I, as a committee member, feel obligated to know. And you, you qualify that in saying you think, okay? I guess I'm just asking for there to be an expert to verify that what you're thinking is correct. Okay? But even if it's, you owe it to the person who buys the house to verify that the drainage on that property can be maintained in some way. Okay? Are we gonna run it into the town sewage system, you know, because it's in the village? What are you gonna, I would feel guilty selling a house to somebody knowing that there were drainage problems.
Well, and I think we're, we're...
Okay, digressing.
From, you know, the issue at hand. Now, I had one of the other people raising a hand that wants to speak, um, that piped in there, and I wanna make sure everybody, since this is virtual, so, all right. What's your name?
Deetra Hiles. Um, do you want my Baltimore address? I live at eighty-one sixty High Street in Thurston, but I do own Baltimore property. Um, I only wanna speak...
What's, what's the Baltimore property we're just...
One twenty West Market. I only wanna speak to the fact that usually a variance, which is a changing of the rules, in my opinion, should only be permitted after all other scenarios have been exhausted. All other scenarios have not been exhausted yet. He has not tried to buy that property back. Um, I would also like to bring up on his variance application for what he wants to do is in the, in your codes there, zoning codes for the village of Baltimore, was it chapter twelve thirty-six or section twelve thirty-six, if you read letter C, it said that none of these problems can have been caused by the owner of the property. He caused this problem himself by selling off too much land. He could have easily have made the Bachman, which is now the lawman's property, a hundred foot wide, and not a hundred and sixty-five or whatever it may be, and he would not have this property. So you don't grant a variance to somebody who caused this problem themselves and say, we're allowed to bend the rule, we'll bend the rules for you. Um, there's a couple other details on that, like, you know, it's not permitted use as it was because the frontage would change. I don't understand how he got it on the other side of the road. In my opinion, it's a PUD because the frontage has been shortened, and it is a non-conforming use. Um, everybody has to abide by your chapter twelve seventy-two and your R two development, and those homes across the street are not under that. Um, I am not, was not involved in any of that, so if an actual PUD was done, then I did not know that. But this does sound more like a PUD to me than it does a single R two dwelling, and...
We're, we're not, PUDs have very specific...
Right. He's got more than one house on property. It doesn't belong, any more than one person in a house, but I wanna speak more to the frontage. You know, uh, twelve thirty-six C says he cannot have caused this problem himself, and he did. He sold too much of his property off. He didn't want the electric poles on his property that was supposed to be an egress to the field, and I'm with Kay on that one. He has not exhausted all of his ability or attempts to remedy this without changing the rules. You don't just change rules because it's requested. There has to be a reason, and there's not a legitimate reason here to change the road frontage. And with all honesty, drainage is not the legit, even the best reason to say no to changing this road frontage. The fact that he caused it himself, and he has not exhausted all other possibilities, is the reason to say no to this variance.
We, we, we have to be careful when we talk about exhausting all possibilities because you could lots split across the back parcel...
No, not according to the deeds restrictions that he put on.
I'm talking, please, hold on. If we can't, with, with the virtual meetings, we can't talk over each other.
Sorry.
You could lot split across the back, and then you've got a landlocked parcel that a court would order a driveway put in. Now, there might be things like deed restrictions or something for that. Um, but if you can split this eleven acres into, into different parcels, you could split off, potentially split off that. And that is an, that is an option available, but I don't think it's one that we want to have, force people to explore But I don't think it's one that we want to have, force people to explore before asking for a variance because now we're just going to court for, and, and adding costs for unnecessary reasons. That, but that's an option available here. You know, it might not be a reasonable one, but you, we gotta be careful what we ask for when we talk about exploring all options. So, um, Jim, I wanna hear from you.
I'm off mute now.
You are off.
In listening to what Kay has asked for with the engineer, it's outside of our jurisdiction as the village of Baltimore, do anything with that. But the county engineers took out their responsibility and gave that up. I thought Kay's dad would have his problem out there. He could do everything he wanted, but point, and nobody would help him. Couldn't get it off.
Jim, we're only catching about every other word.
Yeah, I thought maybe obviously only one.
It still sounds like you got a bad connection.
Can you go outside if he's on his phone?
Good idea. Jim, are you still there? Well, my thing's showing me that you're trying to talk, but it's, we can't hear you. Hey, Jim, if you can hear me, maybe try to call back in and see if you get a better connection.
Okay, I'll call back again.
Wait, wait, wait. Keep talking. We heard you good right there. Don't.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe, maybe it's Hear me?
Nope, you started to go out again.
Okay, let me go to a different location in the house.
Okay.
If it makes a difference. Am I getting clearer?
You are.
You're starting to hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'm out of my dungeon room in the basement. Okay, okay. Listening to what Kay was talking about with getting Jeremiah up involved.
Yes.
He's been very cooperative with a lot of things around Baltimore. I think all of us know him. And maybe with him or the county looking into this problem, we can get some cooperation with the people downstream where the tile is broken and needs to be fixed or where there's blowouts. Right now, uh, five or six years ago, we talked about this and it got to a point where we could get it all the way except on the other side of Holder Road outside of the town, our township, it was in what, Walnut Township?
The lines right there.
And we couldn't get agreements there. Maybe with the county getting involved, maybe that will open some doors to get some of that fixed. Because whether Roger builds or whether Roger doesn't build, that needs to be resolved because we got a lake out there that's gotta be drained regularly. And I think it would do everybody that's involved with this in that area some good to get that fixed. So I would like to see the county engineer involved with it also. We could put this whole thing for Roger on hold and come back to it after some, some things are looked at. Right now, if Roger can't build there at all, he doesn't need the variance. If he wants to go in and make three units and needs a variance, that's fine. He can get three units in there. And, but he's gotta get the problem solved. And I don't like giving a variance with conditions because sometimes the conditions, and we have a situation going right now where this organization gave a variance with conditions and those conditions have yet to be met. And we've got it in writing where he does not intend to meet those conditions. So, and we're not enforcing it. So there's, I've got a double problem here. And I think right now, I know Roger doesn't need to make any enemies out there. So I think it's best with what Kay is saying, let's try and fix the problem. That's just my humble opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Hookrattle.
Thank you. Doug, what about you?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think our code gives us, gives the BZA all the right they want to deny this variance with 1240.02, section three, where it says if it causes detriment to any adjoining property. And it also states that, uh, if the problem can be, can be solved by some other manner than granting the variance. I think we need to not be lenient with variances and I think we need to stick with the code when we can. And, I mean, it was written for a reason and approved by council for a reason. So if it can be solved without a variance, I think it should be. And I also feel that if it's gonna cause detriment to the adjoining properties, then that problem needs to be resolved also.
Let me, let me ask, because whatever the BZA fines, we have to have basically a, a statement of facts. And you said, um, could, uh, would cause a detriment to others. How does
Detriment to the property?
How does, well, but that's not the question before the committee. The question is, is can you put a driveway on this part? What, I mean, this parcel is non-conforming because it does not have 100 feet. So we've got that. So the variance is therefore to put a driveway on there. How does a driveway work to the detriment of others? Because
No, you're not talking about just putting a driveway on. You're talking about making a buil-, a buildable lot.
But we don't have any building, we don't have any building plans yet. There's no site plan. There's no lot split plans. There's no PUD plans. This is presumably the first step to something like that.
You're trying to make it an R1. That makes it a buildable lot.
Trying to make it
I'm sorry, you're trying to make it an R2, which makes it a buildable lot. By giving a variance, you've called it an R2, which makes it a buildable lot.
Well
It's an R2 Doug, already.
It's, it's an R2 already.
Okay, that's where, yeah, but it's not buildable. So you're gonna make it a buildable lot by giving a variance.
Well, you see, and, and that's, that's the problem is he could go back there right now and build a house in the middle of that 11 acres. But there's no way to get in and out of that house because of that, because it's non-conforming. So, you know, if you don't grant the variance, then you, to the detriment of the owner, taken away all ability to use the property.
No, because he's already said that he could go back and buy the property that he needed to make it an R2. If he had to. So with our, you have it in the zoning code that if it can be granted, or if it can be solved by another manner other than a variance, that should be approached first.
Is that a precedent we wanna set though, when someone comes in with a variance in the future and says, hey, you could solve this variance by going and buying the parcel next to you? Is that a precedent we wanna set? And say you have to explore that.
You'd not like to try that? I don't know. Why do we have a code then? If you, if you wanna have a code that has numbers, hard numbers in it, then that's why we have a code with hard numbers.
We have a code so we can have fun discussions like this.
Mayor, another concern that I have
Yeah.
Is that we don't have any input from the two neighbors on either side. And just because they're not with us tonight, doesn't mean that they don't have a concern. Have, I mean, maybe they're not technologically aware to engage this way.
And, and I, I get that. I mean, if we were in person, they might be able to show up. But I believe the letter Terry sent also said they could email or call Terry with concerns to be relayed. So let me, Terry, did you hear from any residents about this that said they might not be able to attend?
We're on the call, just so you know.
Oh.
Oh, we do have someone.
Yeah.
Okay, that's Mr. Newton?
Don Lanham.
Oh, okay, you bought the Bachman property?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So I'd like to know how you feel about this.
Well, honestly, we weren't aware of any major water issues. And, I mean, now that is of a concern, but again, it doesn't deal with the variance portion of this. But I do have a concern as far as the detriment of our kids. You know, if there's a driveway running along every foot of our property line on the side, you know, and our kids are playing out there and there's three houses in the backside of it, our property, you know, how many cars are gonna be coming and going, also our animals and stuff like that. So that is my concern.
Which, I'm looking at the map. Which property do you have? Is it the one to the north or the south?
The south.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I believe it's Mr. Layland. Are you still there?
Lanham, yes.
Okay, sorry. So you own the, formerly the Bachman property, whi-, which has, according to my map, about 215 feet of road frontage. Would you be willing to sell some of that frontage to, to Mr. Wood?
You can't put him on the spot like that.
Well, I, I'm just asking a question general.
Uh, I would be willing to entertain, maybe have a conversation with, with him and we could go from there.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot to say, yes, you will sell. I just, just wanted to see if that avenue was even available.
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I? Mr. Mayor? Deetra?
Okay, yeah.
Um, since you are needing to have findings from the BZA, you can also quote your code number 1236.03, letter C, that states special conditions cannot be the results from the actions of the applicant. He sold too much land and he doesn't have enough road frontage. He caused the problem. That does not give him a variance. And that would help you with your findings that you need.
Do, Terry, I know I've asked this and we've got some old reference to what may have been. Do we have any definitive answer on whether or not in 1999, since 1999, we've changed the zoning code and road frontage? What I'm asking is, is could this have been acceptable in, in 1990, in the 1990s when this was split off?
I can only give a, give a opinion and not a factual opinion because I do not have a copy of the 1999 zoning codes. I only start with the 2006 zoning codes, which does reference 1991 zoning codes. But I don't have a copy of those. I searched today for them and I don't. But in 1991, it said the same thing as it does. I mean, in 2006, it says the same that it does today.
Okay. Okay. All right, committee. You now get the options. We, we've heard and discussed and now, now we get to decide. Do we want to discuss some more? Do we want to discuss some more tonight or at a later date? Do you wanna make a decision tonight? Or do you want to, I believe our code gives 30 days after today to have a decision. So if you don't wanna make one tonight, we would have to have another meeting in 30 days, which would probably just be our September meeting.
I thought it was 35 days. Am I wrong, Terry?
I think, hold on, I think it used to be 45 and then when we redid the code, we put it to 30.
Okay, I guess I'm remembering the old one, as old people tend to see.
I think, but let me flip through while you guys are discussing your next options here. Okay, so, yes, within 30 days of the conclusion of the public hearing, the board of zoning appeal shall either approve, approve with supplementary conditions or disapprove the request. So 30 days from today.
Okay. I personally would like to exercise that option. I don't know what everyone else thinks, but that would be my, my request would be to exercise our 30 days. So we'll be able to, what do you guys think?
Well, I would rather exercise that also. Exercise that because in the 30 days, can we get some input from the county on this? And that way, if we make a hard, fast decision tonight, this meeting and this variance is over. Roger has to start all over again. I think for everybody that's involved here, it would be best to extend it out 30 days. Try our best, so whoever's gonna do that to get Jeremiah up involved in this because being that ditch, a drainage ditch was tiled, it seems to me like the county can or should be able to force
Compliance?
Property compliance, yes. Somebody's gotta be able to. Because there's a lot more than just Roger's property draining into this. It's a, it's a problem for a lot of people. So I think, after you brought it up, Kay, I, I think that would be our best route to pressure the county to say, hey, you know, to pressure the county to say, hey, you know, you giving the responsibility of this up has created a lot of problems for a lot of people in our village. And in the Walnut and Liberty Township. So I think that is worth, at least worth the effort in trying to get it done that way.
And I, I would be willing to bet that if that's the route the committee takes, Terry will be on the phone with Jeremiah's office, nine o'clock tomorrow morning when they open.
Okay.
And I see her head, yes.
Yes.
In fact, I'm sending him a request for an invite right now as soon as I get off this meeting to talk.
I, I looked at the calendar. Um, our next meeting is September 10th, which is 28 days from today. Or the next regularly scheduled planning and zoning meeting, um, where we would normally have the BZA as well, is 28 days from today. So that is within the 30 days window that we have.
Okay. And Roger's growing soybeans. They're not going to be ready for harvest in 30 days.
Ken, Doug, what are your thoughts on, uh, not doing a decision tonight, letting Terry contact the engineer's office and, and having a meeting on September 10th to have some more information and then further discuss and decide?
Be in favor of table this till the next meeting?
Ken?
I would agree that we're, we're best to, uh, to let this set for, uh, the 30 days or till the next meeting and get some additional input.
Okay. Um, Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to have something to say.
Absolutely.
I want to get history about this property. Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Three or four years ago, the village of Baltimore applied for a grant. And, uh, there was quite a bit of engineering that went into it. I helped where I could and, uh, I spent a good bit of time with Don Morrison, the village engineer, helping him with this ditch. We walked it. We talked to a lot of people and then we had a community meeting with most property owners at the village. What we ran into was downstream. Several of the property owners didn't want to cooperate with the grant. Uh, they were going to put a new 36 inch pipe all the way down to the river, down to Wanta Creek. But they didn't get done. The citizens, two or three of them downstream, didn't want anybody to come across their property. And it is private. It's not, there's no easements on it. So that creates a problem. Then we came up with a solution of not bothering their, just to do a retention basin behind where Jim Reed lived. It was going to be a two acre retention basin that we donated the land and that was in the works. Well, I'm not real sure what happened, but I think the village pulled funding and canceled the project. So I'm hoping that this works out and believe me, I agree with most of the things that were said here tonight. And I will totally cooperate, hoping that the issues are solved. But it's going to take a lot of effort and probably a lot of time to solve this problem. That's all I have to say.
I do, I, I do remember that, um, those meetings and I, I remember the reason we did not go forward with applying for that grant is because we were told it was going to be a $300,000 grant for the village that we would have no costs associated with it. And then as we did the grant application and got further into it, we realized the village would be in for over $30,000, which was not budgeted at the time and, uh, were prepared for. So that's.
Do you, there's any available, do you think there's any grants now that we possibly could apply for?
That might be something we could explore with Jeremiah up.
Yeah, Terry's always looking for grants and I.
You know, that property, I've owned it for 30 or 35 years and it's not going to be an issue. I, I was just trying to finish out Hold a Road. I, I've still have some excavating to do back there. I'm going to build a pond and I'm going to build a little bit of a waterway. So it'll keep me busy. I don't have to, you know, build a house back there. I was just sort of wanting to finish everything off before I get too old, but maybe somebody else will do it.
All right, um, it's eight 15, eight 18. Um, it sounds like committee is in a consensus to, uh, basically table this for some additional information that Terry is going to work on getting. And we will schedule this for another BZA meeting. Um, that'll be a regular BZA meeting. This will conclude the public hearing portion of it, um, on September 10th. If we are able to meet in person, we will meet in person. If not, uh, we will circulate the meeting information like this and invite, and invite people to attend, tend like this. So, uh, unless anybody has anything else, uh, we could entertain a motion to, uh, well, I guess we should probably have a.
Say, do we need a motion to extend the, our 30 day option?
Yeah, that's what I was, I was thinking out loud. Probably need a motion to.
Think about that motion to adjourn.
Yes, table, um, table this discussion pending further, um, further information and reset September 10th.
Okay, I will make that motion. I move that we, um, extend our option of the 30 days to explore and do some additional research before we make a decision on Roger Woods' variance request.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right, Ken seconded. Any discussion on it?
The only thing that I would point out is that Kay is the 30 days and our meeting is in 28.
But within, within.
Within 30 days. So, all right, roll call, Terry.
She's getting the words down.
Kay?
Yes.
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
All right, now you can do the other motion. Ken, you going to give me a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to, to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second his motion.
All right, discussion. Roll call.
Kay?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
All right, we will adjourn this meeting at eight 20. Uh, thank you everyone for participating on, on Zoom. Like I said, hopefully we'll be able to meet in person in September, but if not, we'll, uh, I, few kinks in the beginning, but I think we got them worked out here. So we'll, we'll use this again if we can't meet in person. So thanks.
Jim just can't be in the dungeon.
Yeah, Jim just can't be in the dungeon. All right, everyone. Thanks and have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, I don't care if they hear me. I heard a dumb ass conversation.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, hold on a sec, Roger.
Okay. Mayor, can you give me a call sometime? Uh, tonight would be preferred, but if not, maybe later. Got a couple of questions for you.
Yeah, I'll give you a call here in a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, see ya.